Okay. This meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth.
Present.
Mr. Hayes. Ms. Huth. Ms. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Otto.
Present.
Mr. Whelan. Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Here.
The first item is additions to the agenda. I have one change, and that is a request from our Public Works Director to remove item eight. Are there any objections? Okay, that will be removed. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to staff report. Mayor Satterthwaite?
Yeah, a few things. First, we talked several weeks ago about a public hearing for the Library Master Plan when that was before us, and we've got that set for 6:00, September 7th. That's the Tuesday right after Labor Day, and that'll be right here in the council chambers. Second, I got a call from Representative Naomi Jacobson this afternoon, and she indicated that the governor has now signed our TIF extension for TIF II. That was, had passed both houses and was on the governor's desk, and so she said that he signed that this afternoon. It's a TIF II extension for a period of 12 years. And finally, I want to remind everyone that the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival is this weekend. It's on Friday, starts on Friday at 5:00 and goes to 11:00, and also Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And I have a proclamation for Sweet Corn, which I'll read a few paragraphs of. Whereas the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival is in its 29th year, and whereas the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival provides a weekend of entertainment, sweet corn, food, beverages, vendors, art, games, activities, and more for the residents of Champaign County and beyond, and whereas the Urbana Business Association, City of Urbana, and many other community businesses and members donate a great deal of time and financial resources to the annual Sweet Corn Festival. Now, therefore, I, Todd Satterthwaite, Mayor of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the week of August 23rd to August 28th, 2004, as Urbana Sweet Corn Festival Celebration Week in the City of Urbana, and encourage the citizens and businesses of this community to join me in supporting the Sweet Corn Festival and recognizing the dedicated work of those involved, and encouraging you to visit the Sweet Corn Festival this week.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, move on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9th?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. Chenoweth. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Otto.
I just wanted to clarify, on page two, under the discussion of the ethics ordinance in the first paragraph, I don't think it's quite clear exactly what I was trying to do, so I was going to propose a change. Right now, it says, the last sentence is, "Mr. Otto's desire is to address that issue so that there is no need for resignation." And I would propose changing that last sentence so that it reads, "Mr. Otto's desire is to address that issue so that the city ethics ordinance eliminates the loopholes, but the city can't, ethics ordinance can be complied with by recusing oneself from those issues in which one has a conflict. State ethics law would remain unchanged."
Would you be so kind as to give that in writing to the city clerk so she could...
Certainly.
Thank you. Does everyone, everyone hear that, and is it clear what this says? Or would you like it read again? Ms. Chenoweth?
Is, I don't recall you saying that sentence, so you're, you're summarizing what you, what you remember you said at the time.
That's right. This is a paraphrase of what I said at the time, and I'm trying to paraphrase more accurately what I said at the time.
Ms. Wyman?
If you could just paraphrase it one more time?
Sure.
Thanks.
"Mr. Otto's desire is to address that issue so that the city ethics ordinance eliminates the loopholes, but the city ethics ordinance can be complied with by recusing oneself from those issues in which one has a conflict. State ethics law would remain unchanged."
Thank you.
Are there any objections to that correction? All right, we'll include that in the motion. I have two corrections. One is on the bottom of the first page, under minutes of the previous meeting. It was, the motion shows, made by Ms. Wyman, seconded by Ms. Huth, and then there's an extra sentence that says, "The motion was seconded by Ms. Chenoweth." And we only need one second, so if there's no objection, we'll delete that second sentence. And the very last sentence on page one of the minutes. And at the very end, it says, under adjournment, that we adjourned at 11:32 p.m., and actually that, thank goodness, was 10:32 p.m., so if there's no objection, we'll make that change as well. Any other corrections? Mr. Otto?
Actually, one other correction here I just noticed. At the top of page three, it says that Ms. Pat called the question on the motion to amend. The motion was seconded by Ms. Wyman. The motion to call the question carried 6-0 by a roll call vote, voting a were committee members, Chenoweth, Hayes, Huth, Otto, Pat, and Wyman, six, voting nay, none. My recollection is I voted against Ms. Pat's amendment.
I believe that's correct, so the change would be carried five to one. Mr. Otto's name should be stricken from that initial list, and voting nay, it should say, instead of none, it should say Otto. Was there any objection to that change? Okay.
Yeah, my recollection is actually that the, to call the question was unanimous, but that to, that there was no nay.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk, did you, did you call specifically looking at that?
Yes.
And that was the case?
Yes.
And I remember that clearly because I thought, actually, that you would be a nay, and you weren't, so I remember it for that reason.
All right, I'm sorry, that was calling the question.
Right.
Not the actual motion. I now see I was confused. Under the actual motion to amend, it showed me voting nay. Never mind.
Okay, so that will not be a correction.
Right.
Are there any other corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we'll go to public input. If anyone wishes to address the committee, on the back table, as you walk into the room, is, are some orange forms. If you just fill one out and bring it up to the clerk, you'll be recognized, and folks have the choice of speaking now or just prior to discussion of a specific agenda item after hearing the staff report. We will hear tonight from David Thies, representing Chicago Trust, on the topic of the ordinance disclaiming and quick claiming to the News Gazette all interest in certain real property. Hi, David.
David Thies, I'm with the Urbana Law Firm of Webber &amp; Thies. I'm actually here to make myself available to answer questions, but not necessarily make a presentation as to number nine on your agenda. It's the Kennego Trust also, not the Chicago Trust. We represent the...
I'm sorry.
Marriage and Kennego Trust, which is the owner of the real estate that is located on Main Street in Urbana and has, until recently housed, the Urbana office of the News Gazette. It was recently determined in a survey that was being done on the property that there was a very small sliver of property on which there is an encroachment by the building that is located on this property over onto the city parking lot that is immediately next door to the east of this property. When I say sliver, I truly mean that it's a very small area, and we've approached the city staff about the possibility of the city considering the transfer of that property so that we can eliminate the encroachment. I don't think there's anything that I can add to the technical materials that the staff will add, but I'm here to answer questions if there are any.
Are there, Ms. Chenoweth?
How many square feet?
Less than two.
Less than two square feet. It's 1.73 square feet. I think at its widest point, it's several inches wide. It's a long, thin sliver.
Okay. And what did we, what did we charge the University of Illinois per square foot right away?
Well, this isn't really a sale of this. This is a disclaimer of interest. When you're talking about something that's a couple inches wide at the edge of a property line, you're relying on what one surveyor said, and another surveyor might give you a different answer, rather than bicker about whether or not it was on the property line. You just say, "Well, it sounds like it's basically right at the property line," and to the extent that somebody could call it an encroachment, just disclaim any interest in it.
I see. So it's not a transfer of property?
It's, it's a disclaimer of the interest in that little bit of property.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Thies?
If not, then let me just say thank you for considering the action that we've requested very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the committee at this time? Okay, then we'll move right into the agenda. Item number five, excuse me, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance landfill remediation costs. That's ordinance number 200408112. We'll hear from Bill Gray, our Public Works Director.
We have a two-part reason to meet this evening. One is just to give an update on landfill and the progress, since we haven't really updated this committee since January. And secondly, in the end, we're seeking to receive a budget amendment authorization and request at the next council meeting, we have that budget amendment approval, so that we have sufficient funds to complete the project. That's real quick, and Mr. Fletcher's here too to answer any questions, but since January, the consultants, our consultant GeoSynTech, along with staff and various meetings and phone calls with the IEPA, we have come together with a good plan. We think it's a very cost-effective plan to take care of these seeps that were discovered some time ago, these petroleum-based seeps at the landfill. We've put together plans and specifications, and IEPA has looked at them, reviewed them, along with the university, of course, as they are our partner, and finally got to the point where they were completed and we went out for bids, and just last week, we received bids for two projects. We made these two distinct projects. The one we're calling the Butzow Ditch Project, and what's, what's involved here is a large ditch or ravine that was cut into the landfill many decades ago and has had exposed refuse inert type materials for some time, and as part of the IEPA checklist or report that we received was we had to cover this material. And in so doing, the best cost-effective way to do that was a combination large diameter storm sewer, which would convey most low-flow and modern rain events, and put the necessary two-foot or so clay cap or cover on the side slopes and seed and put the, and have grass replacement. And then, if there's an extraordinary rain event, we would have water that would be filling that 60-inch pipe, would then be able to flow in what would be like a ditch area above the pipe, which would be very infrequent, but it's a way to convey that water. So we did receive those bids. Deuce Construction from Champaign was the low bidder, slightly under $250,000, and we're very comfortable and pleased, and that was under our engineer's estimate for that project. And the second project we received bids on then, which is the bigger project, is the Butzow Ditch Project, and this is, excuse me, Saline Ditch, thank you, project. And this was to, again, armor our south bank of the, of the saline, where we have had significant erosion occur and where these seeps did occur, and we'll be laying back these steep banks to a little bit of a flatter or a lesser slope, but there's a lot of earthwork involved. There's some riprap armoring of the lower elevations. There's going to be a collection tile, if you will, that if there are any potential seeps, they'll be collected in this trench drain, if you will, and we'll be able to safely and properly remove that type of material. We did receive a bid, a good bid, from a contractor from Indianapolis who is familiar with this kind of work, and we've checked out their references and such, and we're very pleased that it's bid, although it's $798,000, but still, it's well within our engineer's estimate for the cost for this project. So the university representatives have been involved. They've seen the plans, they're aware of the bids we've received, so they're supportive of what's going on. If, if we do receive the budget amendment ordinance we're seeking here, then we would be looking to have contracts signed and perhaps work start as soon as early, early to mid-September, so. Total completion of the project, which would basically be the restoration aspect of the work, would probably not be till next spring, as I understand it. But if you have questions, we happily answer them. The budget review, the second page of the memo, goes into a bit of detail here, and maybe just I could point out a few highlights, but we're right now, with the best information we have, total, total costs, and this is from the previous two fiscal years, where we've had various fees for removing trees and testing, sampling, and engineering fees, along with what we know now after these bids have been received, along with some amount of money for contingency. We're at a little over $1.5 million in total cost, is what this project is, is looking like. The budget amendment that we're looking here is for a dollar amount of $130,390, and that includes a university contribution of $262,877. If you recall, their portion for this project is about 20% of the total cost, although they are not totally involved, or the portion of the landfill where the Butzow Ditch cuts through actually is a portion that the university would not be contributing funds because they have no specific interest in that portion of the landfill. So I'll stop here and try to answer any questions, but we're on a cusp here of, of addressing these two, you know, large issues. And after questions, we've got one other item to talk about, which is this Clearwater Seeps, so.
Are there questions for Mr. Gray? Ms. Chenoweth?
Very rudimentary question. What happens to the leach, to the leachate after it leaches into the trench? So is this, is this a sustainable solution?
Well, the, the plan is that the PBS material will be intercepted by the trench, and then there'll be four manholes constructed along the reach of the interceptor pipe. We expect to receive or generate anywhere from maybe five to 20 gallons of this material a year. We really don't know at this point in time. They'll be collected in manholes, and then they'll be sent for, for appropriate treatment in the future. But it will take, take, you know, a good year after this is constructed to actually determine what kind of quantities we're seeing, and those will be sustained for a period of time. I really couldn't tell you how long that will be, but it will have to be a budget item in the future.
And will we outsource that work of taking it, transferring it, or will we be doing that work?
Well, I think we'll, we have talked just briefly about that procedure. I think we'll have some more definite plans on that as we go along in the future. But given the relatively small quantities, it'll be something that perhaps even our public works staff will be able to, to handle.
So there's a chance that there will not be ongoing costs associated with this? I mean, obviously, we don't know when it's going to spring another leak or something like that, but what I mean is, given what we know now and what we're looking at spending for remediation, are we looking at long-term costs with that plan? I mean, ongoing costs with that plan?
Relatively insignificant costs. As I said, we'll, we may have to treat maybe, you know, five to 20 gallons a year.
And that's all?
And that'll be relatively negligible.
Okay.
But our, we do have equipment that can suck or reclaim, you know, get this material, and we'd have to properly handle it and send it to the corporate, you know, landfill or what have you. But I wouldn't say no cost. There will be some cost.
Other, Mayor Satterthwaite?
I don't want to, I was at that meeting in January when we talked to the IEPA, and they stated their support of our approach, but do we need, in addition to the letter from them, do we need a permit to, from IEPA to do this?
No.
So it's not actually going, the improvement is not actually going to be in the waterway? It's going to be on the bank, and so that we don't need a permit unless it gets in the waterway? Is that right?
Well, actually, we've received two permits. We've received an okay from the IEPA, and we've also received a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to perform work actually in saline ditches may be required to facilitate this construction.
And we don't need any permit for the Butzow project, just for the saline?
Well, and the Corps of Engineer.
Corps of Engineer permit, yeah.
We received it for that too.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I don't want to jump the gun, but when IEPA got finished, you know, doing all their inspections and everything, then after that, they, they noticed this Clearwater Seepage, so that gonna cost us more money, because they, they said let us know within 90 days.
Well, we should have some more information on that in the next 90 days. The data that we've taken and the analysis that's been performed on the Clearwater Seeps to date doesn't indicate that there is any quote-unquote "leachate" material from Clearwater Seeps. There are seeps, for those of you who've been out there, there are a lot of rusty stains on the side of the banks from these, emanating from these Clearseeps. That's a precipitate, as a result of the oxidation of iron and manganese, which are, which have elevated levels in this Clearwater. Those levels are basically naturally occurring minerals that are found in waters in and around this particular area. So what's being undertaken now is additional sampling to ascertain that original data, and we should have some more information on those results within the next 30 days, and hopefully some final conclusion on whether or not we're going to have to do anything with these within the next 90 days. But to date, it looks very positive and certainly encouraging that we will not have to do anything with that. But again, that's pending future results.
No, just, you know, thinking, there's a lot of money to remediate the system and then still have something else out there lurking.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Otto?
I, Bruce might be able to address this question. I know that our, our budget surplus this year was some vanishingly small number. Was it $60 or something like that? And so I'm curious, when we do get a budget amendment, how are we gonna pay for it? Where's the money gonna come from?
Well, this is about $130,000 more than, than we budgeted from the reserve fund during this last budget cycle. We'll still have around $1,004,000 or so left in our reserve fund after.
Okay. One of the things I would be interested in hearing an update on, and I guess this is a little bit unrelated, whenever we have a chance, is how are revenue projections coming in, or how are our actual revenues coming in as opposed to projections? You know, this spring, when we were drawing up the budget, it looked like the economy was going to be taking off, and maybe we would finally see some relief from the declines that we've seen. But as of right now, things seem to be sputtering again, and so I'm not sure when the appropriate time is, when you'll have numbers on that, but as soon as possible, if we could have an update on that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I'm, I'm on that, and the problem is, is that I'm as anxious as you are to see where we are, but there's quite a bit of a lag in terms of the reporting from the state that we get in terms of sales tax and, and monitoring the sources of revenue that we have. There's, there's a significant delay. But I would, I would expect in the near term that we'll be able to provide you a report to show you where we were at the end of June 30th. Auditors are here right now. This is audit week, and we will hopefully be able to give you some sort of update on our revenues in the near term.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm as curious as you are as to where we are.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Gray, did you say you had more to present on this?
Well, I think we covered the, the seeps with Mr. Hayes's question, so.
Okay, thank you. In that case, is there a motion on the ordinance?
To send this to council with recommendation for approval?
Motion by Ms. Wyman, second by Mr. Hayes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 200408113, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for traffic signal lamp replacement. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. We, several months ago, applied for an Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation grant, and this is something new for, within the state of Illinois, and it was specifically targeting the replacement of incandescent lamps at traffic signals. And you'd be amazed at, you know, the costs that can add up quickly at a signalized intersection, but it's not unusual to, to spend $2,000 or $3,000 per intersection per year for just energy costs. And when we have almost 40 intersections, do the math, you're speaking over $100,000 and paying Illinois Power. Well, they have, for some, for several years now, there have been these LED, these light-emitting diode, if you will, lamps that are available that can take the place of incandescent lamps, and these are much, much less, use much, much less electricity, energy, and can save considerable dollars for us in such costs. So what we're looking at doing here is we, we did apply, we did receive a grant, $58,000 grant, and that pays for a little over half our costs to take care of the red lights, green lights, some of the walk, don't walk lamps throughout the city. We aren't going to be replacing the yellow lamps, and it's kind of a cost-return-investment reason, and quite frankly, there, those lamps do last a long, long time, and because the yellow phase is such a short phase in signals that we tried to maximize the grant monies available with, with the effort it's going to take to do this replacement. But anyway, what's involved is, is it'll be our crews, our equipment, to systematically replace these lamps, these incandescent lamps, with this money, and we would be realizing then some energy-saving costs here in short order. And in fact, our costs for the equipment and the labor and materials, we would probably see a return on investments here in, in about three years or less. What is needed, though, is a budget amendment ordinance that, again, would account for the over $100,000 in replacement lamp replacement costs, and we feel that this is a win-win situation. One of the beauties of these LED lamps is, is that once installed, their life is typically 10 years or longer, and if we don't have to go back out and replace lamps, you know, over that period of time, that's going to really save us, we estimate at least 100 man-hours a year, or worker hours a year, and again, that's a cost savings too for the city. So I highly recommend that we move forward with this, and like I said, the $48,000 fund balance that we're requesting for this will be replaced probably in less than three years because of the energy costs that we're going to see, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gray? Mayor Satterthwaite?
Bill, I take it that this technology is a proven technology. We're not gonna be finding that 10 years is really 10 months of the longevity of the bulbs?
You know, several states throughout the United States have really gone ahead with this, and it has been three, four years of, of use that we're aware of, and all the indication and information we have, and there's three or so makers of these LEDs that we can choose from or will, will be receiving bids for, but the best information we have is that's for the amount of hours that they be in use, it's not unusual to get 10 years out of, out of these lamps, so.
So long as we're not the guinea pig on this, and they're testing this new technology out on us.
Actually, quite frankly, we're a little behind the curve, a little bit. The state of Illinois has been. I don't know if you've done any traveling, but there are many states that have been implementing and using LEDs now for some time, and, I mean, it's hitting in Illinois pretty quickly now, and of course, this grant here is a great way for communities that may... now, and of course, this grant here is a great way for communities that may not have that upfront capital to do the work. There's even some businesses out there that are banking, being a banker, if you will, for a community because the return is so good, that if you don't have that cash, they'll lend it to you, and of course, in savings, future savings and utility bills, that's how you reimburse the quote-unquote bank, if you will. So there's even those sorts of startup businesses out there, because this is such a win-win situation.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, this technology has been around for a couple of years. I think many people are switching their regular light bulbs to get these fluorescent light bulbs. They cost a little more, but they, they last a lot longer.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wyman, second by Mr. Hayes, discussion. Excuse me, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2000-408-110, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 2393 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, requiring stop signs at certain, at a certain intersection, Sailing Court and Smith Road. Mr. Gray?
At the most recent Traffic Commission meeting, these three locations were discussed. Basically, they're being recommended as a result of recently completed streets in town. The first, Sailing Court, which is the street that is part of the North Lincoln Industrial Park subdivision, and if you've been up to the Central Waste Transfer Facility, that's the local street that leads to Central Waste. We need to have a stop sign for that local industrial street intersection with a arterial street, which is Lincoln Avenue, and hence the recommendation. Similarly, our contractor, just a few weeks ago, completed the connection of Smith Road, which intersects Florida Avenue and Stone Creek Boulevard, and for that short stub street where we're intersecting a collector and arterial street, we need to look at stop signs, one-way stops at those intersections, so that's the recommendation.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Gray? Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. Wyman, to send the ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.